You are limited to three minutes and as Member Johnson pointed out, I did allow one person last month to exceed that three minutes and I apologize for that lapse in judgment and will work towards ensuring that that doesn't happen in the future. I want to remind the audience of our civility code. We welcome your comments and encourage you to give your thoughts from your perspective. While we as a board are interested in audience members, what they have to say, we are unable to respond directly to questions during this time period due to the time constraints and sometimes data privacy laws. We do take notes however, and if we feel the need to gain additional information from you, we will not hesitate to contact you. So please abide by our civility rules and code and again keeping your comments to three minutes. We have a few folks signed up and reminding folks if they do want to address the board, they need to sign up at the podium. Our first speaker is Teri DeZook. Welcome, Teri, followed by Lauren Martell. And Teri has brought an audience. Welcome.
Thank you. Superintendent Gronseth and board members, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Teri DeZook, President of Education Minnesota Duluth Clerical Local 692. It is my honor to speak to you on behalf of my members. As you can see, many of them are here tonight along with other union members to show support for the important and high-quality work ISD 709 clerical staff provide to our students, parents, staff, and the community. We are aware that for the past several years, the district has faced many challenges from declining enrollment to declining resources of revenue. The clerical unit has, like many other bargaining units, seen the elimination of jobs and increased workloads. As of July 1st, 2013, we will be losing an additional 3.2 full-time equivalent positions while the duties associated with these positions remain. They include a full-time food service position, and by the way, there was already a clerical sub in that department today working on a large mailing, a full-time residential treatment position, a full-time Indian education office of education equity position through consolidation, and a .2 treasure position cut at East High School. We have willingly taken on additional duties and challenges to partner with district administration as they have had to make difficult staffing and program decisions. We along with maintenance, paraprofessionals, food service employees, and teachers have picked up where asked and made ends meet for the past decade. The underfunding of public education has resulted in job loss, position consolidation, and added responsibilities for all, but numbers show that our clerical staff has been hit especially hard. The district has been forced to balance the budget on the backs of its employees. It is our utmost desire to continue to deliver excellent customer service as the district moves forward. However, with current workloads as they are, with the addition of security measures being discussed and implemented at our sites, clerical members are skipping breaks and lunch and regularly working beyond their contract day, often without compensation in order to complete tax necessary for the smooth operation of the district as a whole. We can't spread ourselves any thinner. In conclusion, I have two requests or asks of you this evening. The first request is to put a two-year moratorium on the elimination or consolidation of clerical positions, and secondly, please seriously consider the implications of requiring secretaries to become school security personnel as they are not trained or equipped to take on these duties. Thank you for listening and taking into consideration the contributions of all educational support professionals and especially the members of the Duluth Clerical Bargaining Unit. I am happy to answer any questions or comments you may have now in the future, and again, thank you.
Thank you, Teri. Next up to speak, next person to speak is Lauren Martell, followed by Sharon Witherspoon. Good evening.
My wife passed away last month. Had I known six years ago she was going to be gone today, I never would have gotten involved in the struggle over the RED Plan. I never would have sacrificed a single precious second that could have been spent with her She was a very sweet person. She was not a fighter. She said to me more than once, "Honey, try not to get mad. Try to be nice." I said, "They're running everyone over. If you're nice, they'll just run you over that much easier. They want what they want, and they're going to pervert the system and run everyone over to get it." When I was knocking on doors in this community, a RED Plan supporter said to me, "The RED Plan process may have been ugly, but we had every right to do what we did. We couldn't get these new schools any other way because the people of Duluth are old, cheap, and stupid." That's what she said. Old, cheap, and stupid. I said, "You don't think the people are bright enough to pick up on that attitude?" I admit now at times that I became too animated and loud, but it is untrue that I ever attacked Mr. Grover personally. I mentioned his wife once in a speech only because she had called up one of his constituents, an 86-year-old woman, and harassed her for writing a letter. This whole process was warped, the most filthy politics I have ever witnessed firsthand. To exemplify just how warped the process became, the paper of record called Grover's actions "an act of courage." What he did was anything but that. But I wish I could, would have just come in here over and over and repeated in a calm voice that I believe what he did made a mockery of representative government. I wish now with all my heart that I had listened to my better half, who always had much more wisdom than I have.
Thank you, Mr. Martell, and I personally am sorry for your loss. Sharon Witherspoon is our next speaker, followed by Regina Cameron. Welcome, Sharon.
Welcome. Good afternoon, board members, superintendent, my supporters behind me and the audience there. I'm rising to the occasion tonight to address the board members on a very important issue that is dear to me. And during this course, I will integrate a word or two from the late, great Dr. Martin Luther King speech. I have just a couple of little excerpts. So initially, down through the years, the district has said, "Send me someone who is qualified, a homegrown, and we will hire them." You cannot believe how elated I was when I read the email coming from the superintendent's office that went out on Friday, April 5th, 2013, with the subject heading "Principal Announcements," and that Ms. Leah Powers was appointed principal for Piedmont Elementary. I thought that the district was finally moving toward diversity in hiring people of color, only to hear two months later that it has been an administrative decision to recommend the non-renewal of her contract to, the non-renewal of her contract to the school board. How devastating, not only to me, not only to this community, but to her and her family who uprooted themselves and came here. From my perspective, a terrible act of injustice and a lack of due process is currently taking place. So in a sense, and I quote Dr. Martin Luther King, "I have come here tonight to cash in a check and further express my concerns of this shameful reality as a citizen of color that is occurring to another citizen of color. If the board votes not to renew Ms. Powers' contract, the district would be in default on its own recruitment and retention policy to recruit, to hire, to train, retain, and promote staff of color. Retention strategies are really lacking within this district. Staff of color are on a lonely island in the midst of a vast and sadly crippled, and sadly crippled by shackles of segregation and chains of discriminations, whether it be intentional or unintentional." Yes, I said chains, chains. We have this lack of support, lack of staff cooperation, lack of respect, lack of positive environment, lack of coaching, lack of feedback, and devaluing one, and the list goes on. In a sense, tonight, I still say I've come to cash in a check and for the district to rise from the dark and desolate valley of systemic inequities and to the sunlit path of equal opportunity. I will not be satisfied until justice rolls down like water and righteousness like a mighty stream, streams of advancing toward equity, diversity within this district. I refuse to believe that the district bank of justice is bankrupt and there are insufficient funds in the great vaults of this opportunity. I'm asking the district to vote yes to renew Ms. Powers' contract. The struggle continue, and I want you to know that I am committed to staying this course and to see that our goals are reached. I got a little, that was just Sharon Witherspoon's hat I was wearing at that time. Now I want to just briefly address, as the Chair of EAC, that I would strongly encourage the administrative decision to eliminate our clerical support, to revisit that decision. I think that with the position of Ron being vacant and the lack of clerical support, that means that the person that's there kind of knows the process, that we at least allow her another year to transition in the person that would be hired in that position. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Regina Cameron, followed by Portia Johnson. Pardon me? Okay, thank you. Our next speaker then is Marcia Stromgren, and reminding any folks from the community that would, or excuse me, Portia Johnson, I'm sorry, and then Marcia Stromgren. So Portia, followed by Marcia Stromgren, and reminding folks in the community, if they would like to address the board, they need to sign up at the front of the room here and they will, we will call on them as we get to it, so. Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, my name is Portia Johnson, and I am a citizen of this community of ISD 709. Ladies and gentlemen of the board administration, I come tonight to talk about a grave injustice that is directed towards Leah Powers-Birds. She was hired as the principal at Unity School at the beginning of our school year. There's an assistant principal, Adrian Norman, that did not work, that worked at Central High School and is--
Portia, I'm going to remind you, you cannot use other names.
I can't use any other name other than Liz?
Yes.
Is that what you say?
You can't even use hers.
I've already done it now, so, okay. All right, thanks, Tom.
All right, thank you. And I'm just, for data privacy, we need to follow the rules, so, thank you.
Say that again?
For data privacy, we need to not use--
Okay.
--personal names.
That's fine, okay.
Thank you.
That's fine, okay. Thank you for correcting me. But it was a very hostile environment when she came, when the principal came. Can I say the school? Okay, to Unity. They made it very difficult for this principal to work there, and every step of the way, she was undermined for every little thing that she did, for every little thing that she said, and although it was within job description of staff that worked there at Unity School. The other part of it is that things were, people were refusing to acknowledge this principal as the principal, and that they didn't want any parts of her. Color played a big part in this when she came. There were certain people who would not go to staff meetings and said that they wouldn't go to staff meetings and nobody could make them, and they went to the union on this particular subject and all the other things that was going on at Unity School. When this came to the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and I would, I would think probably head of HR, what happened with this particular principal is that she was removed from Unity and put in Woodland Hills, her office was. And my thinking is, why wasn't this other person removed from Unity since she was there as a principal? Since she, but she had nine other sites that she worked at, so therefore she didn't work at Unity most of that time. When all this was going on, it was, it was terrible. No one should ever have to work under these kind of conditions at all. Then she was offered a job at Piedmont Elementary School for the next school year. Well, there was a parent there, when this parent found out that she was coming to Piedmont School and the fact that she is an African-American woman, that they didn't want that. They didn't want her there. There was a lot of controversy, there was a lot of, he said, she said, a lot of things went on to try to prevent her from having this particular job up at Piedmont School. This is something that shouldn't happen, but it does in this town. There was a lot of racist stuff that was said and written about it, and written about her. That shouldn't have never happened. There was--
Portia, I'm going to ask you to wrap up.
Okay, I will, okay. Yeah, I guess my thing is that the powers that be, which would be the superintendent and the director of HR, are asking for termination of her, which I think it's a travesty that this is happening to her. You know, there was not asking about her performance, of her job, of what she has done, how she was doing. There was no evaluation. So how in the world can you terminate someone on the grounds that she didn't come to a meeting? That, to me, is horrible. That tells me that there's still a lot of work to be done in this town and in this district. And I would implore you not to vote against her not being removed as a principal, as a staff member in ISD 709. I will just wrap this up because right now, the way this is played out and the way it has, she has been treated in this town, it just tells me that racism is well and alive here. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marcia Stromgren, and reminding any other members of the community, if they would like to address the board, to please sign up at the front of the room. Welcome.
Thank you. Members of the board, again, I come here after five years of watching and listening to this board, talking about kids first, and yet that's not what I'm seeing, and I'm not getting what I think that I'm being skewered for, for my dollar. Talked to a fellow the other day at a graduation party who is a salesman for Walgreens. I don't know if anybody else in this community knows about it, but we have staff from Danfeld at Walgreens in the West End during lunch hours, patrolling the aisles so the kids aren't steaming. Really? Maybe they're not staff. They're people with jackets on so they're recognizable anyway, whatever. He wanted to know where those, where those people were coming from, when they're patrolling the aisles, because he sells products in that store, and it is the kids at lunch hour because he's in there several times a week for his business. So I would like to know the answer to that one. One-third of the class didn't graduate in 2011 and 12, according to an article in the newspaper. Gee whiz. That's a lot of kids not graduating. I mean, my goodness, when I went to school, there weren't that many that didn't graduate in one year. What's going on? What is so bad in your educational system which can keep the kids in there to graduate? Something seems to be wrong. Now, you've been debating the closing of the campus. Here's some things I have said, and I've heard said at committee meetings. "We can't close the campus because kids are addicted to cigarettes." That was the principle of Danfeld. My goodness, addicted to cigarettes at 14, 15, 16, 17, the smoking age is 18, and nothing's being done about that? If they were addicted to marijuana or booze, would you let them off the campus because they have to have their fix during the middle of the day? I don't, I don't get that reasoning whatsoever. Or we have business partnerships and we don't want to offend our partners. We stood here and listened to the policemen say last week, last month, that the traffic tickets are up, the thefts are up. Everything is up during those times of the day. I want to see the campuses closed. I want to see discipline put into place, and those kids that have earned the privilege to get off the campus, they should have it, and they will set the bar that many of them will try to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Johnson, any further folks that have signed up? Okay, reminding folks, one last opportunity if they would like to address the board. Seeing none, we will move on to reading of communications and petitions. We have none this month, board members, so we are now moving on to the report of the superintendent. Welcome, Mr. Gronseth.
Thank you, Chair Casper. Well, another year has come to a close, and it was wonderful to be a part of the graduation ceremonies across the district, and it was great to see so many board members participating in those as well. You know, our seniors have a lot to be proud of as they move to the next stages of their lives, and some of them are off to college, some are off to technical schools, some to trade schools, and I know at least one of them is in the middle of an internship at NASA, which is pretty incredible for a college freshman. It's really unheard of. But whatever our students' goals and dreams are, I wish them well, and I encourage them to dream big and to go for it because our kids have the skills and the knowledge they need to do anything that they want to do. I'd also like to recognize the teachers and the staff for their dedication to education. We're lucky that we have a very well-educated, very experienced staff here in Duluth, and the work that they do every day changes lives. And working in education, although it's a very noble profession, we have to admit that it's not always an easy one, and I deeply appreciate everything that our staff does for students, for families, for the community, and especially for each other, for being there, for teaching each other, and supporting, supporting people the way they need to be supported to get through. Moving forward, we're very busy planning for next year. As you know, the board will be asked to approve a preliminary budget this evening that reflects quite a few reductions, about $3.5 million worth. And this is one of the toughest things that, that we ask you to do. The financial state of education in Minnesota has been challenging for the past 20 years, and while the legislature has recently made some changes that are more positive for the future, it, it doesn't solve the problem for the long term. It doesn't fix everything. So I want people to know that these reductions are not made lightly. A lot of thought and a lot of effort by a lot of people went into the budget to make sure that we are serving our students the very best that we can with the resources that are available to us. You know, we also used what we heard during the Think Kids meetings to prioritize what we are doing, and I just want to thank everyone for being a part of those very tough discussions, and thank you, board, for your service.
Thank you, Superintendent Gronseth. I want to also echo my appreciation for staff on a, on a school year and, and their efforts to, to continue to educate our children. I, as well as many other board members here, attended one, two, or even three of the graduation ceremonies a couple of weeks ago and found inspiration in each of the speakers, including you, Mr. Gronseth, but found inspiration in each of the speakers, especially for me, one of the gentlemen that spoke at the ALC on his efforts to attain his GED and, and what it meant to him in his life. So I want to echo my appreciation for staff that, that puts their heart and their soul and their, their mind into helping our children to, to better places and better opportunities and, and so I also deeply appreciate their efforts and your effort and assistance, Superintendent Crawford's efforts to steer us in that general direction, so, thank you. Any other board members with comments regarding attending graduation? No, seeing none. All right, we are going to move on to reports of standing committees. Member Cameron, the education report, please.
Okay, this is the education committee report for Tuesday, June 18th, under informational items. The 2013 Duluth Daredevil Robotics Team demonstration, they were present, and it was such an awesome demonstration. I want everyone to know that they ranked 10th out of 100 teams in our first robotics world championship. It was just awesome to see what they were doing, and that some of these students will probably go on to be scientists and NASA employees and et cetera. It was just really exciting. Under 1B is the grant application. Ron Hagelin of Education Equity has submitted a grant proposal for $2,000, and this would enable Education Equity to bring a speaker, Ronald E. Ferguson, to Duluth to speak on education in the community regarding the tripod project. C is external sponsored trip. Annette Strom has arranged an externally sponsored trip through Education First EF Tours, and they will be, well, they have traveled to Costa Rica, and these are ordinee students on June 12th. And before I move on to action items, I want to let the board know that I am moving to A1, which is the closed campus presentation that was presented to us by Deputy Chief Mike Tuscan. That is going to be moved to informational only.
Any contention with that, board members? Seeing none? Sounds great, thank you. Continue.
Okay, so continuing under our action items, we have two, which is the modified open campus recommendation. Lauren App, who is the East High School principal, and others were present, and they did present-- Lori Knapp, who is the East High School principal, and others were present, and they did present the modified open campus presentation. This is recommended that the School Board accept and approve this item. Avenue K-12 online program presentation. Ed Crawford and Adrian Norman presenting information on the Aventa K-12 online program that administration is recommending for credit recovery at Denfeld and East High School. B, Resolution E-06133105, acceptance of grant awards to Duluth Public Schools, which is on page 37. I'm going to move there right now and read it so that I see approval on it.
Sounds great. So let's separate that out and do that separately.
I'd like to do it now.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you, Tom. This is Resolution E-06133105, acceptance of grant awards to Duluth Public Schools, whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 requires the school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full, and be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various organizations. You have Northland Foundation listed in an amount of 1,586, Lloyd K. Johnson, the amount of 1,999, and Northland Foundation, again, for $500. I move that for acceptance.
Did I get a seconded by Member Murneke? Any discussion? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries 7-0. Back to the agenda.
Okay, and Item C is extended trip request. Mike McArthur Elementary School, 5th grade boys group, travel to Camp Newman and Superior June 13 through the 14th in partnership with Menace Peacemakers. This trip will allow these boys, this trip did allow these boys to continue the work that took place throughout the 2012-13 school year, building meaningful and respectful friendships only in deeper and more significant ways. And Homecroft Elementary School, 4th and 5th grades, Keyzone students will be traveling to Wolf Ridge Environmental Learning Center in Finland, Minnesota, June 19 through 21st. Access to Internet student data, non-district employees. It is requested that the following organizations be granted access to the student information system to support district functions from July 1, 2013, to June 30, 2014, and you have those listed. Item E is local education agency, LEA. Authorizer is recommended Duluth School Board authorize Charlie LaFreed, federal program supervisor, to act as the LEA representative for the Duluth Public Schools. And F is the German textbook adoption. The Duluth Schools World Language Committee did present to us, and they're asking us to purchase of the kaleidoscopic. I don't know how to say that. Yes. Textbook by Mueller, maybe. And it's recommended that we accept approval of this. And then the 6th grade social studies adoption. The Duluth Public School Social Studies Committee is recommending the purchase of the Northern Lights Revised Secondary Edition textbook for 6th grade, social studies. And then we have diploma requests. The following students have completed all high school requirements and should be awarded a diploma, and you have those students listed. It is recommended that we accept and approve the above diploma requests. Chair Tom Casper, I would like to move acceptance of the entire education committee report.
Okay, thank you, School Board Member Mary Cameron. Could I get a second? Seconded by Member Murneke. Any discussion? Member Wasson.
I'd like to pull two, or not pull, let's discuss 2A1.
Okay. Member Johnson?
Oh, I'm sorry, 2A2.
2A2. Sorry, 2A2.
Would like to have 2A1, though, too.
2A1, part of that discussion with, okay.
Yeah, even though it's information I'd like to talk about.
Anything else? All right. Any other Board members? Member Wasson, you're up.
2A2. It moved to 2A1.
2A2, yes.
It's 2A2. Anyway, I would like to make a motion, an amendment, to this, and that would be that in the school year of 2014, 2015, that we begin a modified campus allowing seniors that have, what's the word that was used on those?
In good standing.
In good standing, be allowed to go off campus for lunch, and the rest of it would be closed.
Seconded by Member Sligapunko. Member Murneke's catching up here a second. Secretary Tia-Ball, did you get that? All right. Board members, any discussion regarding that? Member Cameron.
I would like to see.
Hold on a second, please.
Okay. I would like to see what good standing looks like. I am concerned somewhat about the haves and have-nots, so I would want a clear definition of what good standing looks like, and I would hope that it's solely based on academic performance and nothing else.
Okay. Thank you. And I think that from, I'm going to go back to Member Wasson, and then I'll comment. I'm sorry. Member Wasson.
You know, the two contracts that we received, I think will be helpful with those. One's from Pelican Rapids, and the other one, I can't remember, but it's called Senior Privilege Contract, Brainard. So I think maybe a combination of both of those together would work really well. That's what I was thinking when I was saying that.
Member Westholm.
Yes, I'm in support of the motion, and the only issue I have, and it got discussed last time or at our prior meetings, I'm concerned that we're going to need additional help to run this thing, and there is a cost for that, and I think there was an estimated cost of about $200,000, and with our situation with money, that's kind of tough. So, but yet, I don't believe this is going to work unless we have the additional staff to supervise that. So that is, that is my, I guess, my concern, and so I'm just bringing that up now, and I know we had some discussion of this before.
Thank you, Member Westholm. Superintendent Johnson.
I was just going to mention that if you wanted to build into the motion that it be approved, the, what good standing means, you could do that, and we would be coming back to you during the planning process to describe what it was going to look like.
Thank you. And I'll just interject for a second as well, listening intently to our staff's concerns or what obstacles we may face to initiate something like this, whether it's financial or physical restraints to the building, and hearing from our students as well, student representatives, and also the Deputy Chief, and recognizing that those are all true concerns with implementing and creating a success within a program like this, but also recognizing that we, as a School Board and a school district, have a responsibility to ensure that our students are safe at all times while they're attending school, are as safe as we can make it. We have spent money to improve our schools. We've spent money to improve our cafeterias, our choices in lunch, our opportunities for our students, and I think that this is the next step with that. We've heard a lot about it. I think one of the concerns we heard was that we shouldn't rush into this. Initially, we talked about trying to initiate it the fall of 2013, which is just a couple months away, and hearing from our speakers at our education committee meeting about that rushing into it and that non-inclusive process of creating this closed campus idea for us would create many, many issues. So I believe by supporting Member Wasson's amendment, that gives us 14 months, 15 months of planning, of student input, of community input, of staff input, to create a plan that hopefully is successful for our students and our community. So I, too, am, like Member Westholm and others, am in support of moving ahead with this. So with that, Student Representative Persch.
So just to clarify, we would change it to 20, or 2014, 2015, and then would it be open the year before or closed?
Open.
Open, okay.
As is. Board member, oh, Member Johnston.
Just some quick comments that I heard I wanted to kind of pass on that was discussed. I don't have any real strong opinion one way or another on it, but there's a couple of comments I wanted to pass on. The principals made it very clear that this is being looked at, not because of behavioral, criminal problems, but this is being looked at as a way to improve academics and improve our food choices, those kind of things. I just really want to emphasize this. We heard a lot, and I think I'll go on. I did want to, I'll talk about 2A1 here, too. We had a good presentation from the police, and that was very well. The concern I had was it made it sound like all our students are bordering on criminals, and that just isn't the case. And he did clarify that later, that he sees the bad kids, and we know that there is problems, but I just want to emphasize again that if we were doing this, the main reason isn't because of criminal activity or anything like that, but as to try to improve our academics and try to reduce our achievement gap, those kind of things, which I support. I'm not quite sure about the closed campus, but nonetheless, you know, again, I think our principals seem to be a little bit reluctant later going ahead with it, too. So I just, oh, one other thing I did want to say, there was a concern, too, from the principals, that we may not have room in the cafeterias if we don't have people going out, and that's one of those issues that does have to be addressed to make sure that we can do that. And I guess I would suggest, too, that our students be kept in the loop this next year also to make sure that some of their concerns are properly addressed as well, so I'd kind of like to see that. And I'd like to reiterate to about, and good standing, I'm a little bit concerned about that good standing thing, too. I think that has to be very carefully defined, and we don't want to be discriminating against any group of kids at all, so we have to be really, really careful on that. But with that, I'll just go back to the rest of the Board.
Thank you, Member Johnston. Member Murneke.
Member Johnston's absolutely right. I had a chance to talk to Deputy Chief Tuscan, and he did say that he was talking about roughly 7%, and he did walk it back a bit, but one thing I still want to mention, and this is many, many years in education, is that we've had this problem since the '30s. You know, you've had, we've had kids who caused problems all the way back when my grandpa went to school, so that's one thing. My concern still in a year and a half or so, 14 months, is still what Mr. Westholm brought up, is funding. I have a real problem with that, and we, as we see this develop, we're hoping that somehow we can do this without too much cost. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Murneke. Superintendent Johnson. Hold on a second. There you go.
I know that it's semantics, but I, whenever I hear it, I try to jump in and say there's no bad kids, there's good kids who make bad choices.
Thank you for that clarification. Seeing no, oh, Member, student, or School, Student Representative Tia-Ball, welcome. Hold on a second there, sir.
You're hitting it at the same time.
Okay, you press, and then I'll press. You don't touch it. There you go. Thank you.
I just wanted to ask a quick question, so that if, I understand that budget concerns are an issue. If the School Board finds that in the months to come, as we're refining what good standing is and how the budget will work, if we find that it's too much of a budgetary strain, will that mean that closed campus won't be enforced in any way, or?
I think that's an excellent question, and I think that that's something, as this has developed and the true costs for it identified, this Board will have to make that decision when it comes to that point of when those costs are thoroughly identified and the process has moved forward. So I think that's a good question, and it certainly will be something that will challenge the Board, so. And it, yeah, Superintendent reminds me that it is reversible, so I'm not sure what that means, but, Member Johnston.
Yeah, that kind of brought up some other thought I had, that if we're going to do this, we have to do it right. I think looking at those other, the other samples that we had from other schools, they said they kind of started, it didn't work, they started over again, and it is going to take money. I'm worried about the money part, also. I'm not quite sure how I'm going to vote here, and I guess it's going to decide real quick, but if we're going to do it, we do have to do it right. We got to make sure we have sufficient cafeteria space. We got to have sufficient things for the kids to do. We have to have proper monitors at the door. We got to instigate whatever it is, a card reader program or whatever we're going to do. I don't know how to do that, but it is going to take some time and effort, and all I can say is that I'm worried, I am worried about the money, but I'm hoping we're getting the bang for the buck here. I'm not quite sure we are here, but again, if we do it, we do have to do it right, so I just want to reiterate that, and that may take money, and I would suggest the Superintendent and the principals come back and talk to us if things are not going right, and I think we should be, this should be something that we have to, may have to revisit.
All right. Thank you, Member Johnston. Member Cameron.
I'll make this real short and sweet, and I think that clarification for our student representatives, with the modification that Member Wasson made, this is an action item, and basically what that means is that the Board is accepting and approving this, and we've already voted on it. When Superintendent Johnson said it's reversible, that means another Board can come in and change their minds and not accept what this previous Board has done.
Thank you for that clarification. Member Persch. Okay, hold on a second. Oh, I'm sorry. There we go. It's on the wrong side for me, so.
Has there been any discussion specifically on how much it would cost, like closed versus modified? Would it cost more for the modified or more for the closed?
And I don't, maybe Superintendent Johnson or Assistant Superintendent Crawford can answer that. They've been in those discussions, so Superintendent.
It would actually cost more to do a modified, because then we'd need a way to track who's, who can go off campus and who needs to stay on campus, and it would probably require purchasing hardware, card readers, and staff to keep records on who's earned the privilege of going off campus, so.
Seeing no further discussion, we are going to vote on Member Wasson's, oh, I'm sorry, Member Westholm.
Just a comment about costs. I suspect that the highest cost we're going to have is the initial startup, and once you get started up, once you buy the hardware you need or the software you need, then after that, I think the cost might be relatively low. You need the staff to support it and to supervise, but after that, you know, there would be an initial cost, like I think that's what we're facing.
Good point, Member Westholm. We have an amendment before us that has been moved and seconded, seeing no further discussion. Can we move to a vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? That carries 7-0. Thank you, Board members. Now back to the approval of the. Oh, I'm sorry. Now we have to. Now we have to vote on the entire education committee report. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That carries 7-0. Moving on to our human resources report. Member Westholm.
Okay, now I think it's on. Human Resources Report for this month, for June. We have Staffing Report action items. We have quite a number on the following page of our agendas. There are other action items. There's a placeholder for Resolution HR 6-13-3102, termination of non-tenured certified staff. Then there's placeholder for Resolution HR 6-13-3103, termination of tenured certified staff. Also placeholder for Resolution HR 6- Also placeholder for Resolution HR six thirteen thirty-one oh four, Termination of Certified Discontinuance of Positions. Then number three, Approval of Instructional Assistant Head Start Reclassification. Number four, Approval of Food Service Site Supervisor Position, and we had people speak to that tonight. And then information items, Summary of the Closed Session of six eleven thirteen. And there are no future items at this time. So that, I, I move the, uh, HR Committee Report for, uh, June.
Could I get a second? We are going to need to, uh, vote on each individual HR, uh, Resolutions, Board members. So, Member Westholm, could you please back up? Oh, I'm sorry. You're going to do the report first and then back to the resolution?
Yeah, why don't we, uh, look at the Human Resources Action Items for, uh, six eighteen thirteen? And again, you have a number of certified appointments, only one, but certified co-curricular appointments, quite a number. Certified Extensions, thirty-two. Certified Leaves, three. Certified Long-Term Subs, one. Certified Resignations, three. Certified Retirements, three. Certified Temporary Increase, one. Certified Temporary Increase, three. Non-Certified Demotion, one. Non-Certified Extensions, twenty-five. Non-Certified Leaves, twelve. Non-Certified Permanent Decreases, two. Uh, Non-Certified Permanent Increases, eight. Non-Certified Promotions, three. Non-Certified Resignations, four. Non-Certified Retirements, one. And Non-Certified Temporary Increase, two. And so that's the action items on the, uh, HR, uh, Report. I don't see any discussion about that, or anybody having questions?
Could I get a motion second for that? And what we will do then is back up and vote individually on resol- the resolutions before us. Um, so we have a motion and a second by Member Seligapunko. Any discussion regarding the, uh, the, um, regular, uh...
Action items.
Action items of six eighteen two thousand and thirteen? Seeing none, oh, Member Johnston.
Just a question. We're back on item three. There were just some classifications there. I just had a question whether these classifications are new. It seems like we've been getting some classifications, and just a question on how many other jobs have these classifications? As a school going through and re, uh, writing position descriptions, I was just curious, since we have a couple here. Are these new? Are they, are they brand new? Are they just written? Is this a new format, or what?
Take this question at this time, or do you want to wait till we get?
Yes, why don't we go ahead and address that question at this time?
As, uh, we had stated before, when a position is impacted by either federal or state policy, it requires to, uh, reclassify the, this particular position to meet that particular need. And the second classification, which would be the Food Service Site Supervisor, that particular position is new to the district. It was in the Barton Unit before. But due to a reorganization of Food Services Department, they felt that this position could best meet their need, and they can operate a little more efficient and effective.
Thank you. Um, just that answered question. Member Johnston? Okay, um, let's move to a vote then on the action items of six eighteen two thousand and thirteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Uh, any opposed? That carries, uh, seven zero. Okay, uh, Member Westholm, back to the resolutions, please.
Okay, I don't know if there's any particular, well, there's some order, but I'm looking at, uh, Resolution, uh, HR dash six dash thirteen dash thirty-one oh four, and that's Discontinuance of Positions. And we have several positions with, uh, FTEs assigned to them. Um, and I don't know that I need to go through every one of them, but, um, uh, what, the, the reason those are there is, you know, I guess I can read parts of the resolution. Whereas enrollment in the school district is declining, whereas during the two thousand thirteen fourteen school year, the district will lack a sufficient number of pupils to support all tenured teachers currently employed by the district. And whereas the school board has found it necessary to discontinue certain positions, now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of ISD seven oh nine that the following programs and positions be, uh, terminated. And the effective date is June seventh, two thousand thirteen. Now, uh, Tim, Mr. Swirsky, do I, we would need to go through in, uh, specifics? No?
Wait a second, please.
What, what this list is, is a net effect, uh, looking at what we're staffing for next year versus what we had last year. So this is kind of the net-net of those positions.
Thank you. Um, so you have moved, uh, resolution, have you moved that resolution, Member Westholm?
I moved Resolution six thirteen thirty-one oh four.
Could I get a second? Seconded by Member Wasson. Uh, Board members, discussion. Uh, Member Johnston.
Yes, I got a question on, uh, it looks like we're eliminating positions here. And I'm sorry I didn't ask this before, but I'm going to ask now, and hopefully you can ask. For this position and also the other, uh, the other one that we also have, uh, we're eliminating several positions. And I'm wondering where are we at for FTEs? Uh, again, I'm bringing up, in the last November, I asked that question. He gave us a good chart. Uh, last, I guess last November, we had, uh, the previous year, we'd eliminate about thirty-five certified staff and about thirty-two non-licensed staff. And have those, do you have an update on those numbers? Are these, and also are these ones going to add to that, those numbers?
HR Director Swirsky.
It's early in the, the year right now. What I can tell you is, and we haven't got to that resolution yet, but on the, on the non, on the certified tenured staff, this year, there's only five names representing four point two FTE. That's a far cry from what we've had in the last few years. One of the main reasons for that is we did not increase class size this year. Class size automatically is about eleven teachers right off the top. So, I mean, that contributed significantly to that low number we have on tenured, uh, teachers. Also, uh, there were a lot more retirements this year. Uh, but unfortunately, what happens is if a retired teacher, for instance, leaves English, and we don't fill that English position, we've lost one FTE, even though nobody technically lost a position. So that's the result of this other sheet that you're seeing. If you, it doesn't come out totally, like, uh, to the, to the number, but if you add up these positions and you add up your, uh, non-tenured teachers from last month, hourly teachers and our tenured teachers from this year, you'll, you'll come fairly close to, you know, where we are with, with retirees and offsetting all that, so.
Member Johnston.
Can you give me that number? You know, again, with this ones and the one last month's, uh, what, approximately? I mean, did we eliminate another, it seems like it was about fifteen last month? Does that mean we got about, we're eliminating about twenty positions? I'm just asking for at least a ballpark number here, anyway.
Yeah, the ballpark number would be adding up these positions you see in this column with the, with the positions over here. And I didn't add them all up, I'm sorry, um, prior to this. But that, that will be pretty close to the number of positions that have changed.
The ones last month, didn't they decrease, too?
They did, they were a little bit smaller than last year, but very similar. I mean, very similar, similar to last year.
Yeah, so we've got five here, and, uh, what did you say, uh, ten on the other one, somewhere in there?
The, the issue, you know, Mr. Johnston, right now, why, where I'm hesitant, I, I don't have an actual number to give you where we're sitting for teachers, but through the course of summer, um, there are grants that become available. There might be some other retirements that, that happen. Um, we find more funding, or we finesse our funding a little bit more for certain sites. We do have a little bit of a holdback, so we can take care of some of our hotspots. So, you know, ultimately, the net-net teacher, I always like to do at the beginning of that next school year, because we always have an apples-to-apples comparison of one year to the next.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I'm just trying to, it does sound like we, we are, and I'm glad we don't, we had some retirements that held. But my concern is we are eliminating teacher positions still. I mean, we are eliminating some. So that's where I'm trying to get at here, and, uh, we're, we're still going down, which concerns me. That's my whole point here, is that this isn't just retirements we're going to replace, but, uh, the positions, it sounds like, are being eliminated, I think is out of correct.
Superintendent.
The reason they're being eliminated is because, like most of the state, we have a declining enrollment. You know, largely due to change in population. Uh, there just aren't as many school-age kids as there were before. So it's, um, I think Mr. Swirsky wanted to jump, jump in there. Also, what's some of our other, not so much the general fund money, but some of our other dollars, desegregation, some of our title dollars, they've been reduced for next year. And that would be contributing to some of these numbers you see before you.
Hold on a second.
Possibly, maybe where I'm getting at here is it sounds like we're not going to reduce the student-teacher ratio. That's kind of where I'm really going here. We've had some, uh, student reductions of some of these ones. They're kind of keeping up, unfortunately, to that. So that's where I'm going here. We're eliminating some, some positions, but we've also lost students, so, okay.
Uh, point taken, Member Johnson. Uh, we are voting on Resolution six dash thirteen dash three one zero four. Hold on a second, Member Westholm.
One other question for Mr. Swirsky. Um, looking at the list of the Resolution Discontinuance of Positions, special services, is that, is that, that involves special ed or other special programs, or a combination?
That would be special ed, um, some of our TOSSs that are involved with the special ed program.
Thank you. Um, seeing no further discussion, could we have a vote on Resolution HR dash six dash thirteen dash three one zero four? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Any opposed? That carries six one. Uh, Member Westholm, please, uh, refer to, uh, thirty-one oh two next, please, if you could. And then we'll do thirty-one oh three.
I thought we were doing it the opposite.
Yes, thirty-one.
Are we doing this first?
Um, if you'd like, we can do thirty-one oh three first. That's fine, and then we'll do thirty-one oh two.
Okay, Resolution thirty-one oh three is Termination of Certified Tenured Staff. And I'll read through the resolution. Uh, whereas enrollment's declining, whereas during the two thousand thirteen fourteen school year, the district will lack a sufficient number of pupils to support all tenured teachers. Whereas the school board has found it necessary to discontinue certain positions, now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District seven oh nine as follows. The school board proposes that the employment of the following tenured teachers terminate effective at the end of the school day, June seventh, two thousand thirteen, unless another date is indicated below due to discontinuance of position or lack of pupils. Am I supposed to? No. Yeah, go ahead.
In this situation, for both resolutions, we will read names. I do want to say, though, in this, in this, um, certified tenured staff, these teachers are on layoff, so they are subject to recall rights.
Thank you for that clarification, uh, Member Westholm.
And I'll read through the five, uh, people named, um, and the amount of the... Uh, the, the amount of their position, Delane Brown is a one point oh FTE. John Hoban, point eight FTE. Sean Northey, point four FTE. Alan Rattel, one, pardon me. Rat, oh, I'm sorry, Rattie, uh, one point oh, uh, and Rebecca Wise, one point oh. And down at the bottom, number two, and this is, I guess, kind of important, too. The clerk of the school board shall notify all such teachers in writing of the proposed staff layoff, and I presume that's already been done, obviously, the grounds for the proposed layoff and the right to request a hearing within ten calendar days after receiving said notice. The clerk shall also notify all such teachers that if they fail to request a hearing within ten days, they will be deemed to have acquiesced in the board's action. And that's the, uh, content of Resolution HR six thirteen thirty-one oh three.
Thank you, Member Westholm. Could I get a second? Uh, sadly seconded by, uh, Member Seligapunko. Um, any discussion regarding this, uh, difficult decision? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Any opposed? That carries six one with Member Johnston, uh, in non-support. Um, Member Westholm, back to you, Resolution three, uh, six dash thirteen dash thirty-one oh two.
Okay, before I get to that, I guess, uh, during my tenure as a teacher, or as a principal, I, I ended up having to lay off quite a number of teachers over the years. And it was always, I can just say, it's, it was always, always very difficult. And, you know, you get to know these people, and you observe what they've done in the classroom or whatever their, their particular job is, and it was always hard to lose them, but that's the reality. You know, enrollment's going down, or sometimes money is tight, and inevitably, um, some people lose their, parts of their jobs or their jobs. And actually, looking at this list, I mean, five, you know, we hate to lose these five people, uh, there are years where we just had, you know, I don't know how, what the number is, but it's actually a small, fortunately, it's a, it's a small number compared to some of the, the, uh, years I had to deal with this as a principal. So that's just a, a comment with nothing to do with the vote. Okay, now we're on Resolution, uh, HR six thirteen thirty-one oh two. And it's Termination of Certified Probationary, uh, Non-Tenured Staff. And I'll read through the resolution. Whereas during the first three years of consecutive employment, all teachers in the public schools and cities of the first class are deemed to be in a probational period of employment, during which period the school board may renew or not renew any teacher's annual contract as the school board shall see fit. The term "teacher" includes every person regularly employed as a principal or to give instruction in a classroom, or to superintend or supervise classroom instruction, or as a placement teacher, uh, placement teacher and visiting teacher. Now therefore be it resolved by the school board on Independent School District number seven oh nine, St. Luscony, Minnesota, as follows. The employment contracts of the following probationary teachers shall not be renewed, and their employment shall terminate at the end of the day on June twenty-eighth, two thousand thirteen. And do I read through the entire, okay? Unless another date is indicated below, in which case the employment of the particular teacher shall terminate on that date. And I do read the name, okay? And the, the person, unfortunately, that's, uh, laid off is Leah Power. And be it... Not, non-renewed, okay. Be it further resolved, the clerk of the school board shall notify, uh, this teacher in writing before July first, two thousand thirteen, of the termination of their employment. And that's the content of Resolution, uh, HR six thirteen thirty-one oh two, and I move that resolution.
Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Murneke. Uh, Board members, discussion. Member Cameron.
I'll be as brief as possible on this. I stated during the six eleven thirteen closed session that I would not be, uh, supporting this, um, resolution. And I just want to make clear, I, I can't say enough about Sharon Witherspoon's words about cashing a check, homegrown, qualified. This individual is not a homegrown individual, although, um, she has abooted her family from another, uh, state and moved here to the city of Duluth. Um, I believe this person is passionate. I believe this person is qualified. And when I talk about process, when I read this, whereas, there's a three years of consecutive employment where, um, people are on a probationary period, I, I, I think that when we lack sufficient number of qualified , uh, members of underrepresented populations, that we really need to reach out and, and provide the support that, um, people of color and even people from low socioeconomic backgrounds may need coming into a city like Duluth, Minnesota. I, I am totally upset about this, because I, I think this individual is a very passionate, um, individual and very qualified. And, and as I look at the reasons for, um... individual and very qualified, and, and as I look at the reasons for, for non-renewal, I mean, I, I, those are all things that a person can improve on. Nobody comes into a position with every knowledge, skills, and ability being up at, at the one hundred percentile. I, I think that we need to be, do a better job at, at placing people like this in, in positions where they can be mentored and coached, and I don't think that, that mentoring and coach has been sufficient for this individual, given the environment that she was placed in at Unity and ALC.
Thank you, Member Cameron. Member Johnston.
It might be a little bit longer. When I first heard about this, I don't know, a couple weeks ago, I got a copy of the note from the superintendent and the human resources director and to her. I talked to Ms. Power. I also talked to the superintendent and the human resource person. And looking at the letter, there's very little that can be substantiated in the letter. You know, the Pope doesn't have a copy of this letter. There's hearsay. There's things which, which are directly counterdicted by the, by the email, by the written record, I mean, directly counterdicted. There is, I looked at the letter, I looked at the documentation on both sides, and all I'm doing is asking this board not to approve this. We have to say no to the superintendent and the human resource person. This was a situation that could have and should have been resolved. We heard from Ms. Witherspoon that she was offered a job in Piedmont only a month and a half ago. Suddenly between that and a couple weeks later, this disappeared. And I'm very concerned about that. I asked about this, I asked for the discrepancies between the record, and everybody says no. Gee, that's just the way it is. Well, wait a minute, I've seen both sides of it here. We do not, we did not do good. This should have been a situation where a win-win situation for, excuse me, for our Instead, we, by action, if we go ahead and approve this, this is turning this into a lose-lose situation for the district, for the community, and, and for Ms. Power and her family. And this, to me, is really unconscionable on all three of those counts. Let's just give you some, a couple, a couple personal experiences that I had. Ms. Power's, I think, moved here what, in July, something like that, she came, introduced herself to the board, got introduced to the board. I walked by her room all the time, so every once in a while, I'd stop in and say, is Ms. Power's there? And like, just chat, say hi, and see how it's going, if you have anything to say other than just say hi. Well, you know, I stopped in about three times, and, and nobody got a call back, and it didn't bother me, you know, that's happened before in this district. But I asked her about that afterwards and said, gee, I went in there and tried to say hi several times, and she said she was never even, nobody even told her that me, a school board member, stopped in and asked to chat with her. Nobody even told her that. And that indicates to me that there's something wrong going on. I did my research as well. I went in, I talked to some of her associates, and some of the words I came up with from her associates, were, they appreciated her, she enjoys, enjoys working with her, she's invested, she's curious, she's interested, she's engaged, she's kind and friendly. We got letters also from, from NAACP, Claudia Washington, extremely supportive letters. This was given to the board in the closed session. We have a very supportive letter from Ron Hagland. We have a very supportive letter from Sharon Witherspoon who spoke to the board earlier today. We had a very supportive letter from Susan Olson. We had a very supportive letter from another Maribel Merling, teacher at Netherton. Another very supportive letter from Kathy Turhe, which is in Effective Lives Reducing Crime, Arrowhead Regional Corrections. Another good letter from Wendy Burke, who happens to be a, a person who lives in Piedmont, area. And I'm looking at this, I'm wondering, what are we doing? We're making a gross mistake. I'm also worried about potential lawsuits and how that's going to impact the district. I'm not an educator, but I, when I talk to people that say that they, they work with her, and she's a quality person, yet I hear exact opposite from my superintendent and the human resource person. I can't substantiate anything that you've said in this letter from anybody in this district. Nobody. I've talked to them, it's like there's a wall a mile high around there. Nobody tried to do anything to make a compromise, nobody tried to find some way to make this into, turn this into a win-win thing. It was right there, it happened between, you know, right after she was announced, about one week after that, suddenly, she was announced as being the principal, and then she was out. In literally one week. What happened? I'd like to know what happened. I don't know what happened. I keep asking, nobody says anything. Oh, read the letter. Yeah, I read the letter. And that's pretty pathetic. I'm going to read something that I prepared earlier here, this is a little more bureaucratic, but I'll do it. Again, this resolution has brought up and clarified that we have a lack of proper position descriptions, contracts and statements made with employees are being made and broken, employee evaluations are not being properly done, or not being done in a timely manner. Our HR policies and procedures are out of date. The administration does not follow the policies that we, that we have, and these are, I'll read some of them, including Policy four thousand, General Human, General Human and Community Resources and Relations, Policy forty ten, Equal Employment and Promotional Opportunities, Policy forty forty five, Our Recruitment Selection and Assignment Procedures, Policy forty eighty, Probationary Teacher Evaluation, and forty ninety, Administrative Evaluation, Diversity Recruit, and the Diversity Recruitment and Retention Plan. I can go back and say how I think every one of these policies has been violated by this action. And when this, if this goes to court, they're going to look at the same stuff, too, and I had this all on the line, I'm not going to bore everybody with that. Oh, I should be, because this is a person's life we're talking about here. This resolution, to me, has shown a lack of transparency by the administration, undue influence on the administration by questionable community members, discrimination against members of our minority community, lack of due diligence, improper and biased investigation of employees by this administration. Therefore, I'm going to make a motion to amend Resolution HR six thirteen thirty one oh two to remove items one and two, and add, the school board will convene a special committee and issue a report to the school board on August twelfth, Human Resource Committee meeting. Such committee will review compliance with existing four thousand series policies and make recommendations for revisions and updating of all the four thousand series policies. Such committee will be appointed by the board chair and approved by the full school board. Clerical help will be provided by the administration for this committee.
Could I get a second? Member Cameron. Are you going?
I, you-
We'll need you to second that before we can discuss it.
Okay, second.
Okay, thank you. Discussion, Member Cameron.
I need to ask Art, or Member Johnston, what does that, I mean, I understand what you're saying regarding reviewing policies, but how does that fit in with this right now? The here and now is what I need to hear from you.
Member Johnston.
Sure. Thank you for that question, that's good. I'm taking tact here, which I think is necessary, and we could either go ahead and just vote this up or down. That would, I don't, I'm not sure where the board is going to go on this. I hope that they vote this down, but I'm giving opportunity for a board here. Instead of voting this straight up and down, there's an opportunity for the board to look at the process that's been done, some of the accusations that I've brought up, that I've looked at the documentation, give an opportunity for us to look at this. And this, this is quite generic, because I think that all these policies, position descriptions, evaluations have not been followed, and I think that the lack of following policy is also very important, and maybe as important as actually trying to not renew somebody's contract. Because this shows that we had a problem, and I think that we can, we can resolve it here. We could go through, and I hope this board votes no on this resolution, but we have another alternative here to go through and look at what the administration is doing, why we got to this point, and I think that's an all, a preferred alternative than just doing an up-down vote. I hope that explains, Member Cameron, what my intent is on this.
Member Cameron.
Okay, so, so it does, and, and I, and I, I think that's something that we should do, because I, I do have concerns and issues with processes. I, I do have concerns and issues with employees having up-to-date job descriptions. I do have concerns with employees not having official performance evaluations during, during the probationary period. So I, I stand by seconding that, but I'd still like for us to concentrate on, on the issue at hand right now. But I do think that's a very good idea, Art, for us to review those policies and procedures and processes to go along with those policies.
Mr. Sworowski.
I'd just like to make a comment here to Mr. Johnston's comments. The fact that you may not agree with the process that was taken and followed does not mean there wasn't a process, and we did follow a process. Your accusations about things that did or maybe did not occur after being part of the meetings and the information you've been given part of is appalling.
Yes, this is a- Yes, this is an appalling situation. I know for a fact there hasn't been position description, and I know for a fact there hasn't been evaluations done as our policies state, and that is wrong.
All right, seeing no further discussion regarding the amendment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
No, this is the amendment.
Signify by saying aye to the amendment. Those against?
No.
No.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, I'm voting to do that.
Okay, I'm vote, we're voting on the amendment. All those, Mr. Johnston's amendment, all those in favor of that amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed signify by saying no.
No.
That carries, fails in a five to two vote. Back to the resolution at hand, board members. I'm going to-
I want a separate vote.
There's nothing left.
I think this is that the two thousand, or three, thirty one oh two is-
Separate.
Separate.
Okay.
I'm going to briefly weigh in on it. I, I've read a lot about this and the information that's been provided, and I've spoken with Mr. Sworowski, with Assistant Superintendent Crawford, with Superintendent Grandseth, and sat in on, on closed session meetings regarding this. And I feel that, searching for the right word here, I feel that it's a decision that I'm going to support, and that hasn't come lightly. I've had a lot of thought over this and personal reflection over it, and it's not a decision that I take lightly, or without much effort in that process for myself, so. But I feel at the end of the day, the superintendent and his staff do an admirable job guiding our district and, and making those decisions for the, the betterment of our students, and I trust their decisions and I trust their judgment. So my position or my vote on this matter will reflect that in the coming moments, so. Member Westholm.
I've got a process question. I, I know, received a copy under informational items, and it's a summary of the conclusions for the Leah Power evaluation. Does that need to be read into the record?
Get through, let's get through this, this process here and this vote, and then that's the final thing under informational.
Thank you. Member Johnston.
As most people know, I've been concerned about things like financial situations and dealings in this, by this school. And that's a serious concern for me, as it is for a lot of people here. But this is a different concern. I see different looks in people's eyes. This is, we're dealing about people, this is their livelihood, we may very likely be destroying this person's educational career. This is about people, real people, people that, that don't deserve to be treated this way. And when I see that, that look in the people's eyes that I've seen, it is very, very concerning. Very concerning. And that's why this is, this is probably, to me, the, this is, this is, this is people we're talking about here, not tax dollars, this is people. We're destroying our family.
Seeing no further lights on from board members, we are moving to a vote on Resolution six dash thirteen dash thirty one oh two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same. That carries five, too. Thank you, board members, and thank you, board members, for expressing their concerns. Is that the completion of the HR report? I believe that's the completion.
No, we've got, we've got some other items. Okay, number three.
Okay. Hold on a second, Member Westholm. Give me a second to catch up to you and your speedy recovery. All right, go ahead, sir.
Okay, item three of the HR report is approval of instructional assistant head start reclassification. And I believe we received some information on that a couple weeks ago, but, Mr. Sworowski, do you have anything, any further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry.
And I think we've discussed that, I believe, correct?
Yes.
One of you, are both of you going to address us? Hold on a second.
Barely is, though.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving.
Member Westholm.
Okay, so I, I'm moving item three, approval of instructional assistant head start reclassification. Do you need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Salika Punko. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries seven zero. Back to the agenda.
Okay, item four is approval of food service- Okay, item four is approval of food service site supervisor position. I believe we received information on this, too, but any further comment from?
Seeing none. Could I get a motion, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Murneke. Any discussion? Seeing none, move to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries seven zero. Onto informational items.
Okay. Summary of the closed session of June 11th, 2013. And the question I have, do I read this into the record?
Go ahead and read it.
Okay. And this is a summary of conclusions for Leah Power evaluation. And I'll read it slowly and try to be clear. The school board met in a closed session on June 11th, 2013, to evaluate the performance of Principal Leah Power. The Minnesota Open Meeting Law requires the school board to summarize its conclusions regarding the evaluation at its next open meeting. This constitutes the board's summary. Ms. Power has demonstrated that she cares about students, that she connects students with resources that provide for their personal needs, that she possesses, possesses a strong sense of justice, and that her commitment to students comes from the heart. Ms. Power, however, has not performed satisfactorily in the following areas. One, communication. Two, leadership style. Three, time management. Four, learning attitude. Five, professionalism. And six, building trust. And that's some, that's the summary of conclusions for the evaluation.
Thank you. Member Westholm, and I believe we don't have any discussion regarding that. Yes, thank you. That concludes individual items for our HR committee report. Are you moving the remainder? I'm going to have you keep that light on through the report here. There you go.
And I move the Human Resources Committee report for June 18th, 2013.
Could I get a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Member Seligapunko. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
That carries six one. Moving on to the Business Committee report. Member Seligapunko.
Thank you, Chair, Chair Casper. This is the Business Committee regular school board meeting for Tuesday, June 18th, 2013. The usual financial report is number one, and all those reports are in there. Number two, bids, RFPs and quotes reports. There is nothing there. And then number three, policies and regulations. We have a policy, 3136, travel in district, in-state and out-of-state. It's recommended that Duluth School Board approve suspending policy 3136, travel in district, in-state and out-of-state. And there are no regulations. Forest contracts, change orders and leases, A is contracts. The PEEP insurance renewal, it's recommended that Duluth School Board approve the group application for PEEP. Number two, Grant School Community Collaborative Summer Compass. And it's recommended that Duluth School Board approve the contract with the Grant School Community Collaborative for 3,000. Number three, Grant School Community Collaborative Play, All-Aboard the Peace Train, and it's recommended that Duluth School Board approve the contract with Grant School Community Collaborative in the amount of 3,000. And then we have change orders for Cogdon and the Eastern Middle School, or Ordene East, which are all listed there. C is leases. And number one is the Merritt Creek Academy lease. It's recommended that Duluth School Board approve the three-year lease with Merritt Creek Academy with a 0% increase. And then we have resolutions, which I suppose.
Why don't we do those right in order here and get those out of the way?
Do you want to do those? Okay. A is Resolution B 6133106, the State High School League Membership Renewal, and that's on page 72, so I will turn to that. Sorry, I hit that. Okay. This is the resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League. I move Resolution B 6-13-3106 dated June 18th, 2013.
Could I get a second? Seconded by Member Watson. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries seven zero. Back to the agenda.
Okay, and the next page is the resolution adoption of the fiscal year 2014 budget. Be it resolved by the School Board of School District 709, St. Louis County State of Minnesota, that the fiscal year 2014 budget as presented to the school board be adopted. Move Resolution B 6-13-3107 dated June 18th, 2013.
Could I get a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Member Watson. Any discussion? Member Johnston.
We've been told a long while we've got a $3.5 million deficit. And I looked through all my records, I can recall, I can't find any tabulation on where that number came from. Did I miss something or was that tabulated? That's where I'm going here. Is that, okay, we got a $3.5 million deficit. How was that computed? In other words, since I couldn't find it anywhere in my records, so I'm going to ask you that.
Mr. Gra, or, excuse me, Mr. Hanson. There we go.
I believe we went over the worksheet on that at our first committee, the whole meeting, where we dealt with the budget. And it listed several items, both up in the revenue section and in the expenditure section, and then came to a total. Also had a number on there for the, a very preliminary and estimated number for where we might be for the 2014, 15 year as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Back to you, Mr. Johnston.
Okay. What's our expected unassigned fund balance for fiscal year 14? And by that, I mean, that's the one that's, that we compute our statutory operating debt. I couldn't find that anywhere, it's not in our budget, so could you tell me what, if you've got any preliminary projections on what you think that will be for fiscal year I know that's in the audit report, that's where I got it last, and that isn't in there either. I know I asked before about the audit to try to have this number a little more findable by us lay board members, and if it's on here somewhere, I would appreciate it.
Member Johnston, members of the board, what's represented in this budget package is not broken out. Gives a total fund balance number, it's on page two, in the far, on the bottom of the sheet, at the far right. And the total is 2.2 million. That's estimated as part of this. It's not broken out by, what is the assigned portion? Again, I'm looking at the, the budget document with the yellow cover and page two in the lower right-hand column, and it, the number is 2.2 million, a little over that. And that's the total fund balance for the general fund.
Okay, and if I recall correctly, that when we had the discussion on the audit that last year, which I believe the audit was 2012, not 2013, so we're two years back now. But any idea what it's going to be for 2013? And if I remember 2012, I recall it was about 6 million. Maybe you guys can correct me. I recall it was estimated to be about 6 million in the audit, so could you give me some relative numbers on what's happened this year and then what maybe, if this is what it's going to be, I think 2.2 is the number, that's what you estimate for 14? If things, I know this is, this is, we don't know, the year isn't through yet, I know it's going to change, but your best guess at this point is that look, is that, are we comparing apples to apples here from that 6 million back in fiscal year 12 to what we're doing here?
Yep. The, again, I would refer to page two of the document. In this case, the fund balance from June 30th of 2012 is listed on the second to last line. And again, going over to the far right, just to refresh your memory, it's 3.6 million. We're anticipating a deficit this year of 1.4 million, which brings the fund balance to 2.2 million. And there is no change, this is a balanced budget, there is no change as a result of this 1314 budget. And so that's why that number stays the same. So we're projecting a balance of 2.2 million at the end of 13 and at the end of 14.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Back to you, Member Johnston.
Yeah, no, thank you. You know, again, this is confusing on this, you know, again, I'm worried about, of course, how close we're getting in statutory operating debt, and it sounds like we're not getting any farther away, and we're getting closer, we're not there, which is good, of course. But it does still concern me a lot that it's going down. Question on page eight. Again, I believe this is where you're estimating what the general fund savings is going to be, that 6.2 million dollars in parentheses. I just, is this, is this correct? This is what is probably going to be transferred into Fund Five from the general fund based on the savings? Is that correct?
Mr. LeBlanc.
Yes, it is. The 6,164 listed as the transfer out from the general fund unrestricted represents the planned savings inflated as defined in the original long-range facility plan. And so this assumes that the long-range facility plan was fully implemented at the next year.
Okay. That's what I thought. And just to remind everybody, one, a couple columns to the right, it was 3.6 last year. Again, these are numbers, again, from the original plan, which I looked up in the review and comment, and the other numbers are there. It's a lot of money to transfer out of the general fund, some of you have heard me say this before. We know the energy savings aren't there. Has any audit been done yet on this 6.1 million? Is this still the 2007, which was computed back in 2006? Has there been any audit done on those numbers? Since it's a number I don't review and comment, I'm going to have to assume there hasn't been, because there's been no change at all. That concerns me. We're transferring a lot of money from the general fund based on a predicted savings that is seven years old. And I don't think we can substantiate that, and I don't think the number is anywhere near as high as that. My concern is, you don't have to respond, but my concern is that we are not doing our due diligence when it comes to auditing the financial plan that was put in place seven years ago. And now it's really getting big. It went from 3.6 last year to 6.1 this year. And that's a big jump, again, according to plan. I'm not saying it wasn't according to plan, but I think that we should really be reassessing, looking at that and really making sure that there is savings there. And savings is just one issue here. I've also got some other concerns. I'll let Bill go ahead and answer that, but then I'll go on to some other, I think, more important concerns I've got.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes, as we've discussed previously, we do review that number periodically. The challenge for the district right now, as we've discussed on past occasions, is selling the properties that we are no longer using. We continue to work with the city to seek zoning changes in those areas that would, in our opinion, help us to facilitate the sale of those properties. But until we do that, we will be challenged with utility bills, snow plowing and grass mowing and other maintenance expenses that we, you know, prefer not to have, but right now, those are the cards we're holding. So we continue to work diligently to sell those properties for a reasonable price.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Back to you, Member Johnston.
Well, I understand that, but that is exactly why I want an audit of this. We haven't sold those buildings. We have the energy costs, we have the costs that go through to take care of them. And this number is a number that, because of all that, that's not there. That number is on paper number from a document written seven years ago, maybe on the back of a napkin. I'm not quite sure where it came from. But, you know, here we are, we're pulling 6.1 million to 6.2 million dollars out of our general fund. And let's say the savings are good. I think that we all would like to have seen that savings should have been put back into the classrooms, not pulled out to pay for our long-range facility plan debt obligations. I've had that conversations with some of you. People know that that's correct. And I, I will also say that I believe we are the only school in the state of Minnesota that has taken what they, taken projected savings made on the back of a napkin, put it in the bank and use that to pay off our debts. I do not know of one other school that has done that in the state of Minnesota. And I think that is something that we should be looking at. Why, why isn't anybody else doing it? Because you can't bank on things that you don't really know are even there. And again, I'm going to be voting against this budget, and I want to go on and say a couple more other reasons why. Yes, I am. This year, we are transplanting, transferring 4.9 million out of the, for the 2009A, which is on page one, if everybody doesn't believe me. 4.9 in the third column. There's also going to be 2.8 million coming out of the general fund. We're going to call it Fund Five, I don't care what you call it, to pay for COP 2009B. Another 0.1 million coming out to pay for COP 2010D. That's a total of 7.8 million. This number has nothing to do with the savings, incidentally, that we were just talking about. This is just where the money is coming out. That was the justification for this. But I'm saying this was not a good thing. We have to reassess where we're at. Last year, we had 5.9 million that was transferred out for the payoff of those three COPs. This year, it's gone up to 7.8 million. That's just not sustainable. And I'm going to make a statement here. And it's great that we're claiming we're not going to increase class size this year. Our student teacher ratio is good. It's great that the state has increased some of the per-student funding. That's really good. But we've got to remember that we eliminated nearly 40 teacher positions last year, 30 staff last year. Most common complaint that we heard at the Think Kids thing was that we have too large a class sizes. We have already eliminated some of the zero hour and cut curriculum, particularly arts, music and world languages in the middle school. We've lost another 200 students this year and a drop in student enrollment. And I, and I think we have to look at that. I think that drop is because of the parents and the students discussed with the large class sizes and our curriculum cuts. We have nearly the largest achievement gap in the state of Minnesota. We also have among the lowest graduation rates for minorities in the state. Just remind everybody that Minnesota has the lowest graduation rates for minorities in the country. That does not, is not good. And given all that, how can we transfer, justify transferring another 7.8 million dollars from the classrooms, from the general fund, whatever you want to call it, for this fiscal year? If we had savings, if we had them, let's say we had them, is, I think it's irresponsible given the problems that we have as a district, money here to be transferring that money out. If we have savings that were, came about because of the long-range facility plan, those savings should have went back to the classrooms, not to pay off long-range facility debts. And I also believe that this, such transfer of funds is a violation of Minnesota Statute 123B dot 79. That statute prohibits permanent transfers of general funds to other funds like paying for building debts. It also turns out, again, I'll repeat again, that Minnesota is literally unique in Minnesota in transferring money from the general fund to pay for their building debts. And I've got that from MDE, incidentally. No other schools are as foolish as we are to have taken this money from the classrooms. And yeah, we're going to have, well, somebody's got to pay for these buildings. We've got nice buildings. But still, we stopped this transfer of money from the classrooms to pay for our buildings. We're never going to reduce the problems with large class sizes. We're never going to be able to increase our curriculum, and we're not going to eliminate the achievement gap. We have to be honest with the people in Duluth, to tell them what's going on, that we can't pay for buildings out of the classrooms, that we have to find a moral, a legal way to pay for our beautiful buildings. to pay for our beautiful buildings. And I'm asking the board to look at this. We are not on a sustainable course. We have to be honest with our people. And the Think Kids things, never once did I hear anybody talk about, you know, all the money that we're pulling out of the classrooms to go for the buildings. Never once was that brought up. Never once has this been talked to the public that we have all these big, nice buildings that have to be paid for. I'm going to make a motion here. I'm going to move to eliminate the 4.9 million dollars on page one from the debt service fund and zero that number out.
Is there a second? Seeing none, that motion fails. Back to you, Member Johnston.
I'm done.
All right. Superintendent Granseth.
Thank you, Chair Casper. I have so much to say, I'm kind of at a loss. I, I'm not going to address every issue that you brought up that I disagree with. I will say that the long-range facilities plan was certainly not written on the back of a napkin, that hours and hours of professional services went into that plan, that we have talked about the savings over and over and over again. We have talked about the transfer over and over and over again. I'm not going to revisit those here. Our state has had a two-decade history of not financing education in a way that, that truly supports our schools. And that is exactly why, in the last legislative session, our legislators were recognizing that. We're recognizing that. We need to finance education differently in Minnesota. And the governor has promised that the next session is going to call the "on" session, where we start peeling back mandates, because there's a recognition that how we've been operating has not served our schools well. The achievement gap and the graduation rates, you're absolutely right. We need to do better. We need to do better by our citizens. Our whole country needs to do better. And I also want to recognize that one of the things we did tonight was recognize the work of the principal and the staff of MacArthur Elementary. And you're right, they did raise their scores. They've almost doubled them this year, to recognize that the work we are doing is making a difference to our students. We are closing the achievement gap, and we are raising the graduation rate. Are we perfect right now? Absolutely not. We've got a long way to go, but I believe in our staff, and I believe in our community, that together, we can make a difference, and we are making a difference. The Think Kids meetings, I had a lot of conversations in that, and I know that you were at a few of them, but you certainly weren't at the 40 to 50 meetings that were held. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Granseth. Member Johnston.
Sure, just want to reiterate again, I've never complained about our staff. I'm the only one on this board that has consistently voted against eliminating positions. I will continue doing that. I think our staff is top-notch, and I want to reiterate that to make sure that people know that. And I think it's important to recognize that, and I always have. And as I mentioned about Laura Mack today, it's good. But it is time that we start, just like the state of Minnesota, we start putting money into education. That's what we have to do in this community. And yeah, our staff is great, but they can't do it without a proper funding in their classrooms. We need to get that money to the classrooms, and that's why I'm asking for, just like the state of Minnesota, we got a paradigm shift. We also have to have a paradigm shift. We have to be aware of this stuff. There's answers to this. We could be moving forward by reducing class size. Right now, if we change this budget, and we're open with the people of Duluth and how we're going to pay for these buildings.
Seeing no further discussion regarding the Resolution 6-13-3107, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That carries 6-1. Thank you. Members, Sligapunka, back to you.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Okay, and then the last thing is all these informational items. No action is required, and it's all the different reports. And then number seven is future items, workers' comp, and property liability insurance policies and premium designation. So Chair Casper, I move the remainder of the business report except for the resolutions.
Could I get a second? Sentenced by Member Wasson. Any discussion? Member Johnston. What would you like to hold out for discussion, please?
One F, please.
One F? B2 or 2B?
3B2.
3B.
Oh, actually, 4B2, excuse me.
4B2.
Change orders on East.
On East, okay. All of those in their entirety, I would assume?
I'll just, I'll make a quick.
Okay. Anything else?
6F.
6F?
Change orders also.
Okay. Any other board members? All right. Member Johnston, you're up with 1F. You're on.
Yep. Just trying to find the page here. Thank you. This is a Waddams. I bring this up all the time, and it also substantiates what I've been saying here, is that this month, again, we lost another 50 students. We've lost 258 since September. Now, it depends how you count everything. If you go back to a year ago, in June, we've lost only 100, only 140. That's pretty bad. Unfortunately, again, at the start of the long-range facility plan, we had about 10,000 100 students. In other words, we've lost 1,600 students. You do the math, 1,600 students times, if you want, whichever number you want to use, 5,000 to 10,000, you want to count everything. It's a lot of money we've been losing because we've lost so many students. We, the long-range facility plan predicted it was going to bottom out at 9,150. We're down to 8,500. We're 650 below what was predicted. And this year was, we had a higher decrease this year than we've had for the last two years. I was actually hopeful that this was going to actually change, and things were going to, we're going to actually start getting better, but unfortunately, that has not happened. And we have to look at that. We, as a board, I think it's utterly our responsibility to look at this number. We have to do something about our reduced enrollment. That brings in less money to the state. I think, I think that it isn't just because women aren't having babies anymore, it's because people are concerned about our schools. And yes, we don't have 25,000 students in our schools like we did back in 1972. We know that has changed. There has been a paradigm shift, because small families and all that, that's receptive. But we went beyond that. We, actually, I looked it up, we're now the 24th largest school, or smallest school in the state. Two years ago, when I gave my presentation, we were 19th. We went from 19th down to 24th. If you go back another, about 10 years, we actually literally were number three in the state. We went from number three school size down to number 24. And yes, we've reduced, yes, everybody's kind of flat on schools, it depends where you're at, but as a rural, Duluth has been doing much, much significantly worse than the rest of the state. And we have to acknowledge that. We have to address that. We have to have a major, we have to have a major push relating to our community, getting them to come back to our schools, seeing the nice schools we have, and being honest and listening to them, and about tough things. So that's why I wanted to say about the Waddam, it really concerns me, obviously, that we're continuing to go down.
Okay, thank you, Member Johnston. On to B2. Member Sligapunka, I'm sorry.
I know, I just, I have a kind of a fun note. I don't know if anyone ever looks at in the paper when we talk about declining population. It's interesting. I love looking at the bygone days, 20 and 40 years ago, and there was just something recently, within the last week or two, about 20 years ago and 40 years ago. I've seen both, how the population was going down, and our schools were consolidating elementaries, because 40 years ago, we had, I think it was 24 or 25 elementary schools. So I just have to, this has been happening for 40 years. So I just, it was an interesting note, because it was just in the paper, like I said, about a week or two ago. So, and I haven't said anything yet, so I thought, you know, I have to make that note, because it is interesting. So we do, population, yeah. Our population's gone down, and people don't have kids.
And I'm speaking for the newspaper when I say, thank you for reading it. Okay, back to you, Member Johnston.
Sure. I'll talk about 4B2.
B2.
Right. Want to thank Mr. Leiter, who called up and we talked about some of the change orders he was expecting on Congdon, and that was, it was nice. Nobody ever called me up ever before and talked about change orders, and it was appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Leiter. But I do have to come back. I'm going to look at, I'm not going to talk about Congdon. It's nice we got a deduct, thank you on that, but also appreciate some of that communication to me ahead of time. That was for last month, actually. But on East, I mean, like, this, we've had East built now for, what, two years? We're still doing change orders on that. It's just, it's not right. Another $11,000. It's just, this is not the way to do business. Sorry, folks, not the way to do business. Our change orders are too high, and they're been accepted, and you don't have to respond and know what you're going to say. I'll be quiet, and somebody can go home, but that's not the way to do business.
Just clarifying that it's the Eastern Middle School, not East, as you referred to.
Oh, yeah, Eastern Middle School.
All right. On to 6F. Member Johnston.
Okay, sorry. Thank you for the correction. 6F, let's change orders again. Let me find that number. 160, yeah. Again, this comes up to about $92,000. We weren't quite so good on, it looked good that we had a deduct on the other ones. Maybe, I still don't know why we have two sets of change orders. Anyway, this is for, all these change orders are for 92,000. Again, the normal thing is we got some for under $1,000, and here's one for 170, $173, a change order. Not how you do business. It's nickel-diming us to death. Shouldn't be done, and then make a motion to do it. I know it won't be done, but I'll, every once in a while, make a motion to stop such malarkey going on. This is just unacceptable, the way to do business on a big project.
Member Leiter, I'm going to, or Mr. Leiter, excuse me. I'm going to briefly address one thing. I want to thank you and your staff and this board for approving a change order to build sidewalks around the entire Congdon property. As a neighbor to that school since 1991, and having both of my kids attend that school and, and walked with them many times to school, and them walking home many times to school, and seeing other parents do that, it's very encouraging to me, as a neighbor and a community member, to see our efforts to be a good community member and, and build those sidewalks. Unfortunately, it came to us as a change order, an addendum, because of our concerns about the budget, but I'm pleased that we're doing that, and it's great to see that sidewalk built. And I know, having several meetings specific to some of those change orders and hearing from Congdon neighbors, some of them with children with limited mobility, it's nice to see that we're, we're addressing those and, and making that school accessible and its perimeter accessible to people of all abilities. So I want to express my gratitude for your shepherding that as part of our, our community schools and our efforts. So seeing no further lights and no further questions by Member Johnston or any other board members, we are going to move to approve the report of the Business Committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries 6-1. Board members, give me a second to find my agenda. It's lost in translation here. Here we go. Moving on, we have no special resolutions at this time. Are there questions or others? Member Johnston.
Yes, a question. The superintendent, my data practice is act request from February 26th. Responded on April 24th, I responded back in April 5th, that a response was insufficient, and I asked to meet with you. Haven't heard from you. Are we going to meet, or should I just go ahead and file this with the state of Minnesota?
You're always free to make an appointment with me, Mr. Johnson.
I will try again.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. Seeing no other questions, let's move to an adjournment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, board members. Thank you for your patience and your continued commitment.